Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to call this meeting, the regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees is now called to order at 9:30 a.m. Today's meeting is being transmitted via live from the district's website at www.collegeofthedesert.edu. You may join via Zoom by selecting the video tab located in Board Docs or from the College of the Desert website homepage. Next item is roll call. Dr. Kinnaman?
Yes, Student Trustee Chavez Chides. Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Yant.
Present.
Trustee Stefan.
Present.
Trustee Perez.
Present.
And Trustee Wilson.
Present.
Hey, Trustee Stefan. Trustee Stefan.
Present.
Thank you.
Julia, did you receive any notification from Trustee Gonzalez?
I have not. I will reach out to her again right now.
Okay. Trustee Yant, would you kindly lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Please stand if you can. Again, I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God and the visible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I understand Trustee Gonzalez has joined us. Are you there?
I am, Madam Chair. Good morning. Thank you.
Okay, welcome. We now move on to item number two. Two point oh one, the board meeting agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B2. The Board may take action on items of business not appearing on the posted agenda upon a determination by a two-thirds vote of the Board, or if less than two-thirds of the members are present, a unanimous vote of those present that there is need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of the local agencies subsequent to the agenda being posted as specified. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda for January 15, 2021?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, seeing none, the agenda stands confirmed as presented. Moving on to the next item, the minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the regular meeting minutes of December 18, 2020? Hearing none, they stand approved. Moving on to item 3.02, approval of the special meeting minutes from January 7, 2021. This was the special meeting that was held to listen to proposals from search firms for our new president superintendent. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to that special meeting? Okay, hearing none, those stand approved. Moving on to item number four, public comments. In accordance with Executive Order N2520 and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings, remote public participation is allowed and being accepted by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu and read into the record during public comments. There is a limit of three minutes per person. Julia, do we have any requests to speak?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving on to item number five, public updates. President Kinnaman, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would like to introduce Doctors Jermaine Cofcart, sociology professor, who will introduce the student that will be reading the proclamation for Black History Month.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Okay, good. I'm introducing Machiko Kim. So Machiko Kim is a first-generation college student from a lineage of Nigerian and Khmer descent. Machiko Kim will be embarking on her last semester at College of the Desert coming spring 2021, majoring in early childhood education. She hopes to transfer to Cal State San Bernardino in the fall of 2021 to carry on with her academic journey to work in the field of education. Her interests include spending time with family, friends, and cooking. Her passions include reading, writing, painting, being outdoors, hiking, and playing tennis. She has two dogs, a greyhound, Nero, yes, named after the man who allegedly played the fiddle while Rome burned, and an Italian greyhound named Django, yes, named after the film by Quentin Tarantino. For the last three years, every February, in commemoration of Black History Month, she has kept up the tradition of rereading Lorraine Hansberry's informal autobiography, To Be Young, Gifted, and Black, a book that has given her direction, validated her, and reaffirmed her as she finds her way through life being a young black woman in the world. I am honored to introduce the current president of the Black Student Success Center, Machiko Kim.
Hello, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So I will continue forward with reading the proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas in 1921, Carter G. Woodson, father of Black history, established the Association for the Study of Afro-American Life History in Washington, D.C., which began the practice of observing the history of African-Americans in the month of February. And whereas the month was selected because President George Washington and Abraham Lincoln were born in February, as well as Frederick Douglass, great abolitionist and orator. And whereas within the entire Coachella Valley, the history and culture of African-Americans are being recounted and celebrated by all people who understand the significance of one's history to one's humanity. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Board of Trustees of the Community College District at its board meeting of January 15, 2021 acknowledges the contributions of African-Americans and proclaims the month of February 2021 as Black History Month. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees encourages observance of Black History Month throughout the entire Community College District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce Yolanda Bender, instructor hospitality management, to introduce the student who will read the proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month.
Good morning. My name is Yolanda Bender, and I'm the faculty advisor and instructor for the Hospitality Management Program. I would like to thank the College of the Desert Board of Trustees and administration for giving me the opportunity to introduce one of my students for the reading of the CTE Month Proclamation. As we know, CTE is education that directly prepares students for high-wage, high-demand careers. One of the reasons that I joined College of the Desert was to help foster hospitality leaders of the future, and I stand committed to doing so. The student that you are about to meet is a freshman at College of the Desert. By the way, you've also seen some of his work in a presentation that he did for what he hopes to be his future hotel. He does amazing work. He has worked at several distinguished properties, including the Ritz-Carlton Ranch Mirage, and is currently the food and beverage shift manager at the Agua Calienta Casino in Cathedral City. So as a freshman, he was able to garner a salaried position. I have no doubt that he will be a star in the industry and a great leader. It is with much pride and enthusiasm that I present Manny Lara to you. Manny?
Hello. Good morning. Thank you. You give me emotional, Miss Bender. Thank you. But here, let me read the proclamation for the Career and Technical Education Month. So it says, whereas February 1 through 28, 2021, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Careers and Technical Education. And whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure of nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education provides Americans with a school-to-career connection is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in the business and industry and contributes to America's leaderships in the international marketplace. And whereas career and technical education gives high school students the experience of practical, meaningful applications of basic, such as reading, writing, and mathematics, thus improving the quality of their education, motivating potential dropouts, and giving all students leadership opportunities in their field and in their communities. And whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills, which provides them with the career choices and potential satisfaction. And whereas ever-increasing cooperative efforts of the career and technical educators, businesses, and industry stimulates the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for the career fields forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the College of the Desert Community College Districts and its board meeting of January 15, 2021, proclaims the month of February 2021 as Career and Technical Education Month. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustee encourages observance of the Career and Technical Education Month throughout the entire Desert Community District and urges all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the Career and Technical Education Programs in the communities to support the participant in these programs to enhance their individual work skills and the productivity.
Thank you, Manuel. Very well. Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. At this time, I would like to introduce Vice President Dr. Annabelle Neary, who is going to share the status of our hybrid course offerings.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Kinnaman. I'm going to provide you updates and plans for winter 2021 and spring 2021 regarding our hybrid offerings. We will begin with nursing and a winter intercession update. The return of nursing students to the campus lab has been a smooth transition. Semester four nursing students arrived on campus starting on January 5. The COD online screening tool, quote, Sway, quote, is being used to check in students by campus security and athletic trainers at the gate. Each student's temperature is also confirmed before they enter campus. Each week during intercession, a different group of students come on campus based on their semester, nursing four, nursing three, and nursing. Each group has been broken down further into three cohorts, A, B, and C, to allow for smaller numbers of students in the labs. We staggered their check-in and lunch breaks to keep the groups separate and also to allow for time spent during the check-in process. Each cohort, A, B, and C, were assigned specific labs and parking lots, so there was increased separation. Week one, January 5 through 8, nursing four students were on campus. Week two, January 11 through 15, nursing three students on campus. And then there's weeks three and four, which is January 19 through the 22nd and January 25 through the 29th. And those are the nursing two students who will be on campus. And then the spring term plans for nursing, faculty are currently working closely to ensure scheduling in the labs is consistent with the COVID-19 plan utilized successfully during the winter intercession. Now is the spring term update for the remaining programs in the applied sciences, which include heating, ventilation, air conditioning, energy systems, automotive technology, fire academy, and correctional officer training. All plans are designed to provide a sanitary and safe environment in accordance with the COVID-19 plan. Lab sections have been scheduled to keep students separated in small groups and time for sanitation between groups. Dean Douglas Benoit has served as a member of the campus reopening work group to gain and share best practices in sanitation and safety. The dean has coordinated with campus security to develop a check-in system and temperature checks. The use of good hygiene practices, face masks, and gowns and gloves will be required in labs. Working with the safety committee, the dean, his faculty, and staff inspected labs and issued recommendations. Labs are now being equipped with plexiglass barriers, markers for entry and exit, and markings for foot traffic flow. In addition, hand sanitizers are being installed in key locations. Work areas will be wiped down frequently. Then student work groups will be closely supervised to prevent interaction between groups. And lastly, new equipment has been purchased and installed to provide additional workstations for student separation. This equipment includes plexiglass barriers to protect students, faculty, and staff. That concludes my report, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Neary. Right. Yesterday, most of you received a copy of an email that was distributed campus-wide, providing an update on COVID-19 and steps that we are taking to protect campus community. That email outlined the actions taken by this board at your December meeting, as well as the work that has been done since those actions. As you know, our faculty, staff, and leadership have been working diligently to protect the safety of anyone who accesses our college facilities. We're grateful that, as of this date, no employer student has contracted COVID during the course of work or while attending a class. If there is a COVID case or potential exposure during the course of work or while on campus, appropriate notifications will go out to the college or respective persons as required by law. Additionally, the email announced the creation of a COVID-19 information site on our college portal. The site is designed specifically for our internal college community and is in addition to the information available on the college website homepage. There will also be an email communication from the Office of the President with the regular updates and any new information. The updates will be distributed every two weeks unless there is immediate information that needs to be shared. And I want to take this public opportunity to especially acknowledge the maintenance and operations, public safety, and information technology staff for their hard work these past several months. I also shared with all employees your appreciation of the Board of Trustees, your appreciation of everything they are doing during these unprecedented times as we all work to serve our students and our community to the very best of our abilities. Lastly, lift up local, a new program of Inland Empire Community Foundation was an op. There was an opportunity to lift each other up in times of great need. Community members were invited to nominate their favorite nonprofits. Over 11,000 nominations were received, and three winners were randomly selected. Congratulations to our friends of the library, one of the three winners and the recipient of a $5,000 grant. And that concludes my public update, Madam Chair.
Thank you, President Kinnaman. I believe, Trustee Yant, did you have a question?
Yes, I would. Late last week, on January 6, I believe, President Shannon of CHAFI, which I believe was the basis that we used for preparing our recommendations, announced that CHAFI has canceled all classes for the spring due to the high rate of positive testing in the area. So in light of CHAFI taking this action, has this had any impact on reviewing our decision?
So I can speak to that, and then I can defer, Trustee Yant. We were informed that this was going to occur prior to its announcement. This was predominantly due to OSHA and at their direction. The committee, whenever, and the committee was made aware as well, took extra precautions and made some modifications to how we are bringing classes back on face-to-face. So, Dr. Neary, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Dr. Kinnaman, Madam Chair. So, Trustee Yant, so even though CHAFI was the initial start, the college customized the COVID-19 plan based on the needs of College of the Desert and modified it in significant ways. And I was in constant contact with the chief, the vice president of instruction from CHAFI. Some key differences between us and CHAFI, CHAFI serves over 20,000 students. And they went for aggressive hybrid offering in fall with a goal of 25% or more hybrid offerings. They cut back a little in fall, but by spring, they allowed all the sciences and quite a few programs to offer hybrid. So OSHA shut them down for a positivity rate because they exceeded the positivity rate amongst their own employees and students. What we have done is we did a different approach. Instead of launching a whole series of programs at once, we purposely chose nursing for the winter end of session, and we're monitoring it and making any adjustments as necessary. For example, last week, the check-in points were done by public safety. We just now brought in the trained athletic trainers to do the check-in points because people may not realize athletic trainers are trained in safety standards, cleanings, and so forth. And then the other thing we did is one program that was approved for hybrid will not be offered as a hybrid. Plant science, agricultural sciences, and natural resources has agreed to not offer a hybrid and be 100% online. And then we've taken extra precautions for correctional officer training. That will only be one cohort of 20 to 25 students, but it's not an open cohort. Because of the COVID cases, unfortunately, it will not be open to students. We've been notified by the Riverside County Office and the Sheriff's Office, it will be Riverside County employees only. Because the Riverside County, they hold the liability. They have property at the Roy Wilson Center, and they're only offering it to their employees. Now, even though that cohort is not open to our students, it's a precaution, but it is locals who currently work for Riverside County and earn $30,000 to $40,000. Once they complete this program in the spring, they can earn as much as $100,000 a year, a significant income, and will be one of the first to open portions of the Indio jail. So even our correctional officer training has been closed to additional students. Our fire academy will only do one cohort. And we are partnering again with Riverside County and the Roy Wilson Training Center. And the county has agreed to hold the liability. That's why they limited those numbers. And then we have an extra cautious plan that has just been submitted for maintenance operation for auto technology and heating and ventilation and air conditioning. And we have offered all, so this is what's a little different from JP. They had some regular meetings, even with lecture content. We have made sure that all lecture content in any portion of the lab has to be taught online. And so we have taken extra precaution, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions as the board faces. Thank you.
I was happy, I'm happy to hear your clarification because I was upset to get the news from CHAFI and not having heard it from any other source. So I appreciate your update in response to CHAFI's actions.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Kinnaman.
Dr. Neary, I know that you were going to provide my report when we got to report, and it was on this topic. Is there anything in addition that you were going to provide during that time that you would like to just go ahead and complete?
Just that we're meeting regularly with the faculty, staff, administrative services, public safety. We have regular briefings on COVID-19 and any changes in county, OSHA, and the state. And we're working with the deans to make sure staff and faculty are informed in case there's any changes. And we are still providing any of the other programs like plant science and agricultural sciences if they want to opt out of the hybrid option and go 100% online. We are working with any external agencies to get any approvals. So that is still an option for the remaining hybrids. And the last one is, there's something, I think I shared this with you, an exec, and I'd be happy to share with the board. Some things are out of our hands. The Board of Registered Nursing is, because of the COVID climate, is meeting regularly. And if the Board of Registered Nursing does make a decision, it is completely out of our hands. It will just be directed to all programs in the state. Just something to keep in mind. But they are meeting regularly because of all the COVID cases and the 0% of ICUs. So just something to be aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Neary, and I appreciate the update on nursing and also mentioning the others. There were five programs, hybrid programs, that are approved by the board last month. And I heard you mention, give an update on all of them, but I didn't hear one about automotive. Dr. Kinnaman, do you know where, that was one of the hybrid programs?
Yes, Dr. Neary, I.
Yes, so automotive followed the same procedures as heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. The plexi glass is in place, the different stations, and we're lucky with automotive because they have outdoor labs with significant separation. And we are working right now, maintenance and operation, along with kind of custodian and cleaning, are evaluating their plan to make sure that we can get the sanitation and the cleaning and the cords as necessary. But similar to heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, the cohorts, the lab sizes are averaging five students in a significant amount of space of 1,100 square feet. So we can not just have social distancing. Our goal is to exceed it with multiple layer areas, multiple clean.
Thank you, Dr. Neary. Is there anything else, Dr. Kinnaman?
No, that concludes public updates. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate hearing the update on how it's going with those hybrids courses. Okay, moving on to item number six, reports. You know, I realize it was a short month with holidays, but please know that the trustees, we really appreciate the opportunity to see and hear from all of you. And so with that, let's move to ASCOT. I understand we have a written report that was submitted by Ireland Olson, ASCOT president. And next would be College of the Desert Foundation. And I understand Catherine Abbott, the executive director, is at a training session today. So, and we just did get her report, right, Julia? I think we just got her report.
Yes, Madam Chair, and it is loaded within Board Docs as well.
Great, thank you. So then let's move on to the CSCE, and our speaker today is Marbea Ordaz, International Education Program Specialist. Marbea, are you there?
Yes. Hi, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
How is everyone doing?
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity that you've given us. So I'll go ahead and get started. I am Marbea Ordaz, newly elected second vice president of CSCE's Chapter 407. Classified staff are preparing for the reopening of certain departments this spring. We will continue to ensure that safety is the number-one priority. We hope the district will establish a process that will have custodians clean and sanitize each building every day it is occupied. There are a number of employees that are on cellular data plans or do not have smartphones. We have asked IT to look into a web-based version of Sway app. Also, we are working with athletic trainers to assist with the questionnaire at the gate when needed. California OSHA has provided some pretty good guidelines as it relates to workplace safety and notification of the possible exposure to COVID-19. We're working with the district to ensure communication is transparent and routine in order to stop the spread of COVID-19. For employees going on to campus, CSCE encourages you to please wear a mask, wash your hands, and email MNO to let them know when you are on campus. This will allow buildings to get sanitized after you leave, which will keep the next person entering the area safe. Please reach out to us if you have any workplace concerns. CSCE and the district are also currently negotiating the effects of employees and students returning to campus. We're also in discussion regarding more protections that include COVID relief, hazard pay, childcare needs, vaccines, et cetera. We meet again Friday, January 15. A huge shout-out to Public Safety Department. A huge shout out to Public Safety Department. We appreciate each of you and we are very grateful for your commitment to employees, students, and community. Over the past 10 months, you have been put through the wringer with so many changes, procedures, and obstacles coming your way. Keep up the great work. Thank you. Stay safe and stay healthy.
Thank you, Marbea.
Thank you so much.
And now moving on to College of the Desert Adjunct Association. I understand Michael Gladich, are you there, your speaker?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, Superintendent Kinaman, and members of the board. Coda is happy to report that hundreds of adjuncts are busy preparing classes for spring 2021. And we much appreciate the opportunities for professional development provided by the district. This includes a wonderful upcoming workshop, "The Full-Time Faculty Hiring Process Demystified", presented by Dr. Annabelle Neary, Dr. Kim Dozier, our committed deans, and Diamond Ansler from Human Resources. As we prepare to return for campus for hybrid classes, Coda has still not received the complete list of adjuncts who will be teaching these classes. Coda compliments the district for its commitment to a safe return to face-to-face instruction. Taking temperatures and using cellphone apps will screen those who have symptoms and keep them from infecting others. But we know coronavirus is spread mainly by people who are asymptomatic. For the first three or four days, people who are infected show no symptoms and they are contagious. In fact, approximately half of all people with COVID-19 never develop symptoms. In Iceland, for example, which has tested a higher proportion of inhabitants than any other country, out of those who tested positive, about 50% had no symptoms. Asymptomatic people spread the virus and don't even know it. Now, the district states in the latest MOU with us, "The district will follow the most protective of the most current guidelines of the state and local public officials, Cal, OSHA, and current CDC guidance regarding safe practices." So what guidance does the CDC offer for asymptomatic spread? Weekly testing. The CDC guideline for nursing facilities, for example, where asymptomatic staff and patients are brought together in a situation much like a classroom, is weekly testing. Asymptomatic spread is also why the California Department of Public Health mandates that all healthcare workers be tested weekly. What does this mean for education? According to an LA Times report, young adults, college-age, are more likely to develop asymptomatic cases of the coronavirus. So at UC Irvine, for example, on-campus students are tested weekly. At UCLA, students attending classes on campus are tested weekly. We urge the district to provide weekly, rapid turnaround tests for every person involved in face-to-face learning on COD campuses until the exponential asymptomatic spread of the virus is brought under control. The adjuncts are looking forward to our adjunct flex day on January 27. Last fall, we had record attendance of adjuncts in flex activities and school meetings. Finally, Coda is pleased to report that negotiations with the district have been well-scheduled and very productive. Our next meeting will be January 21. We genuinely look forward to continuing positive discussions with the district's fantastic team led by Vice President Jeff Baker, and to agreement on a new contract before the current contract expires at the end of June. Working together in the current spirit of mutual respect and cooperation, we know we can do this.
Thank you, Michael. Moving on to the College of the Desert Faculty Association. I understand Professor Collins says there is no report this month. So we'll move on to Academic Senate. And Dr. Dozier, who is the Academic Senate President, also says no report this month. So again, I understand it was a short month. Several of you are taking a much deserved break and so realize you're not a lot of activity going on. So hopefully we'll be able to hear from you next month. So now we'll go to reports, the next item, which is reports from the governing board members. And we'll start off with our student trustee, Chavez Chaitas. Are you there? Hello, are you there?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So good morning, Dr. Kinaman, fellow board members, executive and executive cabinet. Today, my report is going to be very short. I just hope everyone has a happy new year. I want to thank Dr. Neary for her update today. I know it was very important for a lot of nursing students to go back to be able to finish their lab requirements, to be able to start working in the field that has currently a high demand for nurses through this pandemic. I also want to thank all the faculty and staff for all the hard work to make this possible while following some of the safety recommendations. This month, I started my first winter class and I'm looking forward to starting the next one in February, the next semester. I'm looking forward to continue serving the students for the rest of this year and hope to achieve many goals with ASCOT. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, good morning. Do you have a report for us today? Are you there?
Trustee Gonzalez, are you on the line still? Madam Chair, if you would like to wait one second, it looks like she is activating her camera and microphone at this moment.
Sorry about that. I'm having a little bit of connectivity issues this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Fine.
Good. I really just want to appreciate before I go on, you know, everyone who has, you know, shared with us everything that is going on. I really don't have much to report, Madam Chair, other than I just continue to learn and I ask everyone to please be patient with me. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to trustee Yant.
I have a very similar message, nothing to report this one.
Okay, trustee Stefan, good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to start out by thanking the readers of our proclamations. Those, I love hearing our proclamations that we make. And I love to have our students read those. So thank you very much, both of you. Also, I'd like to extend my appreciation to everyone at the college that is serving our college and community in assuring the safety of all of us as we go to the hybrid model of learning. It's very difficult. It's a very needed part of education for many of the fields out there. Also, I'd like to extend the congratulations to the Friends of the Library and also to one of our former student trustees, Erin Bonner. He just, I received a word Sunday night that he had just passed his bar exam. So that's quite an accomplishment. He's one of our graduates. And I'm looking forward to hearing where he's going to be practicing and maybe we can get in touch with him and see how he's doing now. It's always disheartening to hear what's happening at another college. But this last month, I had, in January, I've already had one meeting with the Triple CT, which is the California Community College Trustees ACES Committee. We're still planning our virtual conference in January for trustees. And there will be a component also at that for legislative action. And I hope that some of our trustees will be able to attend. I will have, I will be leading one of the sessions or assisting in monitoring one of the sessions. So that will be my responsibility for my first year on this ACES Committee. Also, the Foundation Executive Committee met this last week. And we had a very good discussion on the Student Emergency Fund and how we are, how students are awarded those awards. And I'm sure we'll hear more about that from the Foundation later as it folds out better. And that's all that I have to report this month. I hope everyone's having a great new year start, even though things are very, very rocky all over. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Stefan. Trustee Perez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief as well. I want to echo my trustee Stefan's comments on our student presenters today. You guys did an excellent job. And I also want to thank our staff, faculty, administration, who are making our hybrid program happen. Dr. Neary, thank you for your update. And everybody who was on campus keeping us safe, thank you for that. Also, I want to remind everyone that we're still in the pandemic, although we have the light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccine coming. I want to remind everybody to keep their social distance, keep washing your hands, keep wearing your face mask. A few weeks ago, we lost a great man by the name of Rosario Plata. And he's a great man. It's a pillar in the Mexican-American community here in the Coachella Valley. And it's unfortunate that we lost him to this disease, as well as the father in Mecca. He's very, he's in very grave danger and critical condition right now. I believe they are unplugging him today. And these are very big pillars in our Mexican-American community in the eastern Coachella Valley. So I want to remind everyone to, you know, keep staying safe, keep your physical distance, keep washing your hands. The light is at the end of the tunnel. But, you know, we got to still do our part. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, trustee Perez. So I wanted to also congratulate the Friends of the Library. I received an email from Marge Dodge, who's the president of that board. And she was just absolutely baffled. She could not believe that they had, they had won the funds. So congratulations to all the folks that voted for the Friends of the Library. Only wanted to say that on the agenda, today's agenda, there is a closed session item regarding the interim superintendent president. As we know, President Kinaman's last day is March 31. And so we will be making a decision on that. As you know, there was also a special board meeting last week to listen to presentations for a search firm to help College of the Desert find a new president and superintendent. And we will be taking some action on that later on this month. Superintendent Kinaman, any other comments? Do you have a report?
I just, again, would like to thank everybody for the efforts and the adjustments. We know that this is fluid and as we learn more day by day, we have people in place that help us adjust and try to navigate this pandemic. I do want to acknowledge and thank the Foundation for providing additional funding for our Student Emergency Funds. Dr. Vice President Baker spent a significant amount of time in the meeting going over the process of how we provide those resources and expressing the appreciation from, really from the views of the recipients and what feedback he's received from them as they've needed those resources for just the most basic needs oftentimes. And so again, I thank you publicly to our foundation for being there for our students. And that includes my remarks. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item seven, which is the consent agenda. Let me get my bearings here. All items on the consent agenda will be considered for approval by a single vote without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda to be discussed and considered separately in the action agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. President Kinaman, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Student trustee Chavez Chaitas.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Yant.
Yes.
Trustee Stefan.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes. The motion has carried unanimously. And that takes us over to item number 12, our action agenda.
Madam Chair, if I may, we'll bring you to item 17.
Yes, thank you so much. I was just about to go there. Thank you. So we'll go on to the study session since there was nothing pulled. And we have the distribution of the board self-evaluation instrument. The board secretary has distributed the board self-evaluation instrument to each of us this morning via email. I hope everyone got it. Please take the time to complete this by Friday, February the 12. And what we will do is that we will review our results and have a discussion on this during our February 19 board meeting. And Dr. Kinaman, I wonder for the benefit of our new trustee, if you just provide us with just a little bit of background on the board evaluation.
Certainly. You know, this is such an important piece to our accreditation process. It falls under standard for an accreditation related to governance and the governing board and what the governing board is charged for the, under the standards for the accreditation process. And, and one of those is to have an annual evaluation. And that evaluation also is tied to key things and key standards within the standard for accreditation with ACCJC. And so as you fill that out, you're really reflecting on how we are actualizing that standard so that when we, the commission comes and looks at us for accreditation, that they, they actually, they go and they look at that, those, and determine where we stand with meeting that standard. And so it's a very, very good tool that's tied to not just our internal goals and objectives, but also what all California community colleges and all colleges that are accredited by ACCJC, how they view boards working in the community college systems.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that explanation. Okay. We'll now move on to item 18, which is future agenda items. You know, and rather than email your You know, and rather than email your items to Julia, I'd like to ask each of you if you would like to have a report on any item. So, and then Julia, if you could kindly put together a list and get that to me and President Kineman. So with that, if we could start off with our student trustee Chavez Chides, do you have any items that you'd like to see a report on?
Not at the moment, but if I think of something, I'll email Julia, let her know.
Right, thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, do you have any items that you'd like to see a report on?
Just because, thank you, Madam Chair, by the way, just, just because I'm newer to everything. If I'm interested in seeing, you know, brief presentation on like your edge pledge and concurrent enrollment, if I may, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, we haven't had an update on that in a little while, so thank you. Trustee Yant.
Not at this time.
Okay, trustee Stefan?
None at this time, but I think it would be great, as be said, to have our trustee Gonzalez said to have an update on the edge and pledge, particularly during this time of distance learning, distance education, because I'm sure things are done quite a bit different than the presentations we've had in the past.
Trustee Perez?
Yes, our athletic department and how they're, as it relates to COVID and just in general, I'd like to learn more, a little bit about our athletic department. I think we have, we're pretty good at sports, but I don't know too much about them.
Very good. I agree. Thank you. Okay, for, for myself, you know, I was, actually, I read about this in the Desert Sun about a week or so ago. And President Kineman, you may have seen this too, about, about two years ago, though, the Board of Trustees met. And I think it was either on the Indian campus. There was a presentation done with local tribes to recognize the creation of the California Indian Nations College, the only two-year standalone accredited tribal college. And to do this, they were, I think they're using our accreditation until they can stand on their own, which I understand is in a couple more years. So I would like to see a report, since we were part of that partnership, a major component, on how they're doing and how the partnership is working. So with that, we'll move on to item 19. Closed session. But before we adjourn today's meeting, it is with great sadness that I share with you the news of the recent passing of local real estate developer Tom Noble and College of the Desert professor emeritus, Dr. Darlene Romano. Tom was a successful and respected real estate developer for over 40 years, primarily in the Coachella Valley. Los Angeles native. He graduated from Occidental College in 1965, where he was a member of Alpha Tau Omega Fraternity and played a significant role in the fraternity's admittance of its first black members. In 1971, Tom graduated from the USC Gould School of Law. He did a lot for the Coachella Valley, was deeply involved in the community, both professionally and personally. He generously supported local schools and charities, including the College of the Desert Foundation. And, and on a personal note, he was a good friend and supporter of my late husband. A proponent of education and known as someone others could turn to for advice, help, and support. Those that knew him best say that he was one of the finest men they had ever known. Dr. Darlene Romano was a versatile performer, conductor, composer, and educator, who was equally at home, on stage, at the podium, and in the classroom. Since joining the college more than 35 years ago, she taught in the disciplines of music, musical theater, and theater arts, and served as the Fine Arts Division Chair, Associate Dean of Instruction, and Chair of Arts and Media. Mentoring and inspiring thousands of College of the Desert Theater students throughout the years. She music-directed and coordinated more than two dozen McCallum productions. A true role model for our students, Dr. Romano was a member of the First National Company of Avita and appeared with the Los Angeles Civic Light Opera in productions of Bells Are Ringing, The Sound of Music, and Kismet. Her voice has been featured in numerous pop concerts, commercial jingles, and soundtracks. Throughout her years of performing and teaching, Dr. Romano garnered countless awards and accolades. And in 2020, she was named Faculty of the Year and also achieved a Lifetime Achievement Award from the Desert Theater League. Faculty and staff alike recall her passion and endless energy. Many have shared stories about her beautiful voice and how she personally influenced their careers and the arts community in the Coachella Valley. And so today, with heavy hearts, we close our meeting in honor of Tom Noble, a generous and supportive community leader, and Dr. Darlene Romano, a longtime dedicated educator, mentor, and entertainer. At this time, the board will recess to closed session. The live portion of this meeting will conclude. Should there be any reportable action, I will report it to the Board Secretary, which will then be incorporated into the meeting minutes and posted before the end of business today. Let's see, it's 10:25. Trustees, would you like a 10-minute break, 15-minute break? What do you think? 10 minutes?
I think 10 is plenty, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's convene. I have 10:27. So can I ask that you join us again at President Kineman in closed session at about 10:37? Thank you. And we'll have, we'll reconvene to open session, report any action. I will provide Julia with any action to read out. And so we will now adjourn to closed session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Julia, Casey, it's recess.